Yes, good evening, everyone. And welcome to our regular select board meeting, April 26. And if you'll all join me in the pledge, we'll start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The orders have been approved by the three members here. Kurt is with me here. And Sharon Russell and Mary Ashcroft and Joe Donato are virtual on the Zoom call. And the first order of business will be the approval of the select board minutes, which are almost as long as the Gutenberg Bible. Good job, Bill. Just out of curiosity, motion's been made to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded. Just out of curiosity, Bill, how long did it take you to do these minutes?
This was probably about six or seven hours.
There you go. Any corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes? These will be the minutes of April 12. Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption, signify by saying aye.
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 And it's unanimous. Circulate them for signature. Okay. Under announcements. I have one. Well, let's just do this here. Received a very nice thank you card today. And it's very simple, but very meaningful. Thank you. The fruit was good. Byron. So we're happy. We're happy that he's getting better. And that's a nice note to get. Uh, thank you, Byron. And are there any announcements from the board members?
Sharon? I have one.
How about it?
Uh, just a reminder to seniors that the scholarship deadline for the Rutland Town scholarships is this coming Friday at noon time. The applications for the town scholarships are available on the town's website, but the deadline is this Friday at noon. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I have a I have a statement that I'd like to read. And if you'll bear with me. This is about four minutes. And I'm asking your indulgence. Just for a few moments here to address a problem that this board is having, for which I take full responsibility. Now, for as long as I've been a member of this town, 52 years, and associated with this board and its functioning, it's always been the responsibility and the authority of the chair of this board, working with our administrator, to craft an agenda that allows the efficient and the responsible functioning of this town, while showing respect for the personal time of both the participants in this room and the general public that wishes to attend our meetings. In that regard, I've tried to limit the agenda items to achieve the goal of adjournment somewhere around 8:00 PM, or roughly a two-hour meeting. As everyone here is well aware, we've not come anywhere near that goal with meetings dragging on until nearly 10:00 PM. There's many reasons why this is happening. Sometimes there are time-sensitive items that simply have to be dealt with that make an agenda longer than usual. When that happens, it would behoove us to limit the discussion to relevant items and clear the agenda with motions and action rather than extended discussion. Let's get those muted, Bill. We'd just like to remind you that if you're, especially if you're on a telephone, please mute unless you wish to speak. The main reason for the length of these meetings, however, is the insistence of one member of this board to continually engage in discussion of items that are not on the agenda. In fact, insisting that she be allowed to control the agenda rather than the chairman. In fact, even extending a discussion with our attorney on a totally extraneous matter, adding both time and needless cost to this board. It should be readily apparent to this board and to the general public that our former chair is having a great difficulty assuming the role of member rather than chair of this board. Upon my election as chair, I recall her admonition that it will be a challenging year and that we are a divided board. It should be very apparent that the only division that anyone can see here is the fact that she didn't get the three votes necessary to continue as chair. Calling democracy division is a great disservice in our form of government. Now, let me bring you back well over a year ago. When I took my seat on this board, it was very apparent to me at our first meeting, our reorganizational meeting, that she had the votes to be elected chair, even though I would not have nominated her. In order to start my term off with unity and cohesion as a team player, I voted with the majority to make the vote unanimous, and also out of courtesy to her as chair. I believe it is the most striking contrast that I didn't receive the same courtesy. And now she's on a personal mission to create a self-fulfilling prophecy of division and extending these meetings well beyond a reasonable time. Now, I've been generous in not limiting any board member's time, but that's about to end. Excuse me. I spent a full year being cut off mid-sentence many times when the chair simply did not want to hear my thoughts. All with the admonition that, well, we have an agenda to adhere to. Let's move on. So it shouldn't surprise anyone if we hear those words again. I've also had a polite conversation with our planning commission chair as to limiting her reports to items that require board action, especially in regards to the pocket park. The planning commission minutes are available online on our website, so we don't need to duplicate them here at our meetings. Thanks for listening. As you can see, I'm a little frustrated with the length of these meetings, but I intend to make sure that we can adjourn at a reasonable time. A four-hour meeting is not acceptable to our department heads, our board members, or the general public. And with that, I'll, I will simply turn to the agenda item of
Am I allowed to respond, or would that be considered unduly lengthening the meeting?
No, I'll give you the same four minutes I took.
I don't want four minutes, Don. Your characterization is wrong.
Is there any member of the public who is not on the agenda that wishes to address the board? That would be Lydia.
I believe I'm looking for answers to three questions. How many postcards were purchased? How many were mailed? And how was it determined who they were mailed to?
Larry, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Did you get the answers to Lydia's question that you brought up at the last meeting?
I did. I gave them to her, uh, up at the transfer station.
Larry, we did have a conversation at the transfer station, but you did not have the answers to the questions. You did tell me you purchased 5,000. I understand that. But when it came to knowing how many were mailed, you weren't sure. You thought it was somewhere around 1,000, maybe more. And when asked about who they were mailed to, you said you had gotten a list from the clerk, but you don't remember what the list was. So again, chairperson, I need to know how many were mailed.
With your permission, Carrie, do you remember what list was asked for for the mailing? And it was, which list? I can, if you, yeah, speak up, you can, and I'll repeat it if you do.
Sure. So we use the mailing list that we always use from one program that we always use. The same mailing list that we use for the circle is used for any other mailings that are requested, which means we use the voter list. If you are an active voter in Rutland Town, you will be on that mailing list. If there is several voters in one household, the first voter who signed up over time is the person who's designated to get that address or addressed to them. So there could be a family of four. One person out of that family is going to get a mailing, so that household isn't wasting paper.
Right, right. I think that decision was made, yeah.
Are active voters.
Okay.
It was over 1,000, um, active voters that we gave to the fire department. And the other question is they purchased 5,000 postcards. So there are your three answers.
Over 1,000 isn't an acceptable answer. How many postcards were mailed?
Can I ask you why you're asking this all the time?
Because it has to do with transparency and accuracy, as we talked about last time. You managed
Completely fine, but I don't understand what your purpose is. Are you trying to get after me? Are you trying to get after
Well, let's just, Carrie, let's just, let's, let's, no, let's distill this down. The number is the same number that would be mailed to the circle, which we just got. And of course, I know, I know that only one per household is mailed because it's mailed to me and my wife doesn't get one. There's two voters in our family and so we get one. But that, whatever that number is, it's the same number for every single, you know, they, they simply take the, they take the list, they, excuse me. They take the list, they take the stickers, they stick them on, they mail them.
And that fluctuates because voters move out and voters move in. So that number is never stagnant or the same over time. So when we printed that list, that number could have been different from a list that we did for the circle just a couple of weeks ago.
Whatever the active voter list is, that's what it will be. If it happens to be 1,100, they'll mail 1,100. If it's, if it's 900, they'll mail 900. But it's usually always between 1,000 and 1,200, somewhere in that vicinity.
1,100 and something, if I can remember correctly.
So there is a list. There's the voter list with the 3, 3,500. And then there is this other list that has a voter, one voter per address on it. And that's the list that is used for other things.
Yeah.
And it changes because the voter list changes.
Correct.
And how often is the voter list updated?
Every single week.
Week, okay. So
Every, how many, Carrie?
We're working on it daily, so every week it's changing.
Okay.
So somewhere over 1,000 postcards were mailed. Every household that has a voter would have expected to have received one. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's, that's the way they're mailed.
That's the way they're mailed, okay. And postage was spent. So a more accurate number would be available if you were able to look at how much postage was spent, correct? I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just asking if that was possible.
I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a point of order here, if you'd let me.
What's your point of order?
Yeah, these are not questions that we can answer because the board was not involved with this. This was a fire department function that they took on to send the postcards out, get the mailing list and do that. And these are only questions that can be answered by the department. And I believe Larry headed that up, Assistant Chief Delvinary, and he is the only one that can answer these. Um, the rest of us are just supposing what went on. Um, if Larry received 1,100 addresses to mail stuff out to, and he sent out 1,100, uh, he could figure that out. There, there's numerous ways to do it. But, um, since this was not a, something we were involved with, I don't know how we can answer this. Um, some of these questions need to be directed to the, to the fire department and they did whatever they did. They may not have gotten through the whole list in a timely fashion. And, and so maybe they didn't get them all out to everybody. There's, there's numerous different scenarios that could determine why all the, the people on that address list weren't contacted, there's all kinds. But, but it's nothing that we can answer as a board because we weren't involved. I, I know that we oversee what's going on, but that's a direct function of a different department. And they have to figure out what they did and should have, um, that information. And I'm not trying to put the monkey on anybody's back, but you know, I can't tell you as a board member, nor can Chairman Chaffee tell you as a board member, what was done and how it was done and what the list was. It, it was all done on the department level. And that's where the answers have to come from. And if they can come up with that, it sounds like they bought 5,000 cards, they mailed out somewhere between 1,000 and 1,100 of those. And, and that's, if that's what he had for addresses, that's it. It could be very simple. You go get the address list from Carrie and it'll tell you how many are on there. And that's about how many should have been mailed out. But like she said, it changes weekly. So I, I mean, you ask these questions, we'll get that a weekly answer. Thank you.
Your point of order is well taken. And, and the, and the chair rules that your point of order is well taken and, uh, and that we cannot answer the question any more than we have right here. And, and seriously, Lydia, if you, if you work further or contact further, uh, Larry Delvinieri, uh, he can give you the, uh, he can give you the postal receipt that he has for how many, for the post-its that was bought for those, for that mailing. And I mean, I think that should really settle it. You'll have the amount that was spent on postage. You'll have the number that was sent and you'll have the number that was ordered in that. I think that should answer your question, but we can't, as, uh, as Joe pointed out, we can't, we can't go any further with that here.
And that, sir, is a concern of mine. I will make a couple of comments and that will be it. My understanding is public funds were used for this project. This board approved the spending of those funds. And if transparency and accuracy is difficult to maintain in a project of this size, as a member of Rutland Town, I have significant concerns about how transparent and accurate the handling of the multimillion-dollar projects you are taking on are going to occur.
It's pretty obvious, Lydia. You, along with members of your family, do not want that public building built. You know what? I've sat here and listened to you. No one in this room is trying to cheat the public. Larry Delvinieri is a very honorable man. I find it very offensive that would you, you would do this. And shame on you. Shame on you.
If you need to make that personal, that's your problem, Sharon. Good night.
No, I think, I think you're making it personal.
Well, I think we're at. Any other member of the public who would like to speak to the board? Is there anyone online on the Zoom call that would wish to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we will go to department reports. Walt Tripp, our road commissioner, first off. Good evening, Walt.
At the paving bids, two weeks ago, Bill and I broke it all down. Figured it all out. I think you've all got
Yes, we did.
It's down further on the agenda, so we can wait over that when it's due. Or if you want to do it now, whatever.
What's your pleasure, board? I think we might as well do it under the road commissioner's report. That's, that's A in your packet.
Here in the business, might as well go over it now.
You ready? Yeah. Uh, go ahead, Kurt, your chairman of the committee.
No, uh, Joe is.
Joe, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I, I was, um, out of town when they met and reviewed these. And I think that based on what I see here, and I, I think Kurt would concur, um, the low bidder on the project is Fuller Sand and Gravel for the road work that we have done. That includes the town line project and the other paving with the exclusion of the East Pittsburgh Road because of some culverts that have to be replaced before it can be paved. Um, so, um, is that your assessment, Kurt, that we would go with Fuller Sand and Gravel?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so I would, I would make that motion that we go with Fuller Sand and Gravel to do this year's paving. And, um, I thank Kurt for filling in for me and Walt for doing all the work he did to get us here.
So noted. And so we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Kurt to go with Fuller Sand and Gravel for a cost of $400,834.20 as low bidder on the paving. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion?
I have a question for Joe.
Go ahead.
Just checking, we've got the $200,000 grant, and then I believe we also had 200,000 in the budget.
300.
300,000. Okay, so we're all set to cover the cost.
Yes, uh, Walt pulled the East Pittsburgh Road from the paving list this year because when he was doing the road inspection, he determined that there were some culverts that need to be replaced. And, um, best practice is to replace those one year before paving, so the road has a chance to settle and all the new pieces get acquainted with each other. So we pulled that from the paving.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Are there any other questions or comments, discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous and Fuller Sand and Gravel will be doing our paving this year. Go ahead, Walt.
We've put all the snow plows and sanders away hopefully for the last time. Thursday, yeah, I know. Hopefully not. Um, we're getting the roadside mower ready to go. And then, uh, talked to Rick McCurry here last week. He's all done with winter maintenance. So no more snow plowing for Rick.
He's done completely.
He's done.
Right, because I had heard he had made a decision.
Do anyone else in his family that might be
No, because Joe's got his hands full.
Joe's on the tractor.
Yeah, okay. So like, life always gives you challenges, so.
Well, I think we ought to thank Rick for the many years he put in and was always very willing, so.
Let the word spread. Uh, you know, the McCurry family has always been a fantastic supporter of this town, not only in the winter maintenance, but, uh, you know, in summer work as well. And
I assume he'll still, you know, do summer work, but he just said he's done plowing.
Thank you, Rick, for a lot of years of service to the town. Uh, Chipper.
Chipper, still waiting for the axle, just like
So it's a parts issue now?
Yeah.
What do they, they give you any indication on their supply chain?
Everything else, I mean, it's
Whenever, when it is, it is.
It's getting so motor oil, you can't get.
Really?
Yeah. Lot of parts that they're waiting for.
Okay, that it?
That's all I have.
Thanks, Walt. Jason. Water and Sewer Commissioner, Jason Bathlon.
Good evening.
Evening, Jason.
How we doing?
Good.
So I received, I think it was, uh, two weeks ago, I received a, uh, like a work order from, um, Billy that he got from Andreas on some of the things that he wants me to go and look at and try to, um, clean up or fix and take some pictures, uh, before and after and send it to him. That way he can report it to the state of Vermont, just to show that we're doing an upkeep. I spoke with Kurt there before the meeting. And, um, when I'm over at Windmere, I want to get a, a general idea. So I'll get ahold of either Andreas or, um, he gave me his assistant's number and I can
So this is pictures of what?
So they want all the rock drainages over in Windmere cleaned of all the debris. So I want to get a better idea because I know that the lawn maintenance company that goes over there does all the spraying for weeds and stuff like that inside the rock drainage. And I assume that he wants me to clean out any kind of, um, wood debris or anything like that. But I just want to make sure that I'm doing what they expect.
Okay, good.
I'm going to try to get over there this week and, um, see if I can get ahold of Andreas's assistant. And that way we can get the ball rolling at least. Then over on Susan Drive, they've got, um, like runoff, like sand runoff is just before the drainers, they want cleaned out. Just keep maintaining. So that'd be something else that I'll have to take a picture of before and after, just to show that I'm, we're keeping up with it.
Okay, good. That it?
That's it.
Beautiful. Keep up the good work. Any questions of Jason? Anyone? Thanks, Chase.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. Kerry Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Good evening, Kerry.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
Lots of topics, but I promise they'll be very quick.
Well, thank you, Kerry.
Oh, you're very welcome. Anything that please. All right, um, reminder that the tax due date for the third installment is in May. So it's just a couple of weeks away on the 10th. This is the one where if you haven't paid your taxes, um, you're probably going to want to do it before the 10th. This is the end of our fiscal year. And, uh, the, the penalties and interest after this payment, if you don't pay, kind of hurt a little bit more than the first couple. So giving some suggestions out there.
Well, not only that, but not to interrupt you, but, uh, if you, if you did have some problems in either the first or the second, that does not necessarily make you delinquent. But if you have a problem with this one, then you are a delinquent taxpayer.
That's right. And I don't think some people want that status out there. It's just not a good feeling. That's right, and I don't think some people want that status out there. It's just not a good feeling. Um, a few uh, things about town, uh, the business, the business office. Um, Friday, this Friday, I just got word yesterday that our tabulators are ready, our new ones. Um, and so they're bringing them by um, on Friday at 10 o'clock. And that um, means and was requested by the man bringing them by um, that he would like to show Susan and I kind of the overview of the tabulators. And it's going to take about an hour and a half to two hours to do so, and it has to be us together, her and I. So on Friday, I'd like to just put it out there that we will have a two hour window that the business office will not be open so that we can learn the new tabulator system.
Do you have any firm time when that?
I sure do. Um, I'd like to close from 10 to 12. That should give us enough time. And it's just going to be us downstairs um, using them. Um, so we'll be right back up in the office around probably quarter of 12 or 12, depending on how easy it goes. And then um, to piggyback on that, next Thursday, um, the fifth, uh, we, Susan and I will be going to Killington, uh, the hotel there to um, have about four hours of more training on how to use them. Um, and that starts, I believe I I mentioned this before, but um, it starts at noon and it gets over at four. So next Thursday, the fifth, we would like to close the office um, at 11 o'clock for the rest of the day because we'll need time to travel up there. And again, these um, certainly can go on the website. I'm sure that Bill will help put them out there on Facebook as well, and we will put the notes up on the building so that the reminders are there just in case it conflicts with something someone needs to do. But I do apologize, but this is a good thing that we're moving forward into, so we have to learn how to use them. Um, and along with that, it is kind of time that uh, Susan and I take a little bit of personal time. Um, so she has a week that she has designated where she will not be here. Um, and that will be the week after tax week. Um, we'll both be here for the week of tax week, but next week I am going to um, be home. And that does include the day that we're going to close, but I plan on going to the Killington training and and only taking a little bit of time in the morning um, as personal time. So I will not be here next week. We'll both be here the following week, and then the week after that I will be here and Susan will be off.
Okay, good. Let's make sure that all of this is on the uh, up on the our Facebook page.
Just in case people need, you know, notaries, I know Bill is a notary. You know, and if I'm off next week, they can always go over to Bill and and ask. I know I've been at been asked a lot of questions about notary lately. Um, all right, uh, just wanted to update you and um, I I believe Mary is on to um, the senior checking account is all set. Um, meaning that we had a request that that money, um, that the account be under TD. Um, our our bank that we use here. And um, I spoke with John Weston and we've had several conversations. We've signed the necessary papers. Marty's in on this, Marty Wasserman. Um, so that is all set. We just have some last minute things where he needs to do some stuff, but he's recovering from surgery right now, so um, we wish him well and um, you know, whenever he has the chance, we'll get that all squared away. And there's no there there's nothing, no issues with that, so we're happy to help there. That's all set. Um, and the other thing that's all set is the ARPA reporting. That's all set for this year. That was um, I I won't have to look at that again for another year. Let's just say I'm not, I'm not mad about that. Yeah, that was not a fun thing.
Welcome to dealing with the government.
I was gonna say, the federal government doesn't make that nice and easy.
How however, I will put a shout out there to um, a woman named Katie from BLCT. She was phenomenal at walking me through some of the issues in that reporting. Um, so she was, she was great, and I told her I could not thank her enough. Um, the the their instructions were not that clear, uh, not Katie's, the the government.
Well, it's good to know because, you know, we often throw the term BLCT or uh, at at meetings and so forth, the Vermont legal cities and towns, but it's good that we get it from firsthand information as to how valuable they are as a resource on a whole mess of things.
Fantastic.
Including this, so thank you.
And I did get her name from um, Ed Bove, who I believe is our representative in the regional planning commission for the ARPA. So thanks to him too, because man, that was helpful. And uh, I just uh, wanted to put out there that I'm meeting with Andrew finally. Tax season's over, yay. Um, and he is meeting with me tomorrow and we'll go over all the lovely questions that I've had piling up over the last couple of weeks. Um, so that is happening tomorrow at 10:00. And then the last two things may take a little longer. I'm really trying to be quick. Um, the.
I like your definition of quick.
It usually is quick. Sorry, Don. Um, two last things, I swear.
I'm gonna put a new dictionary definition in.
Um. So I was, I got an email from Louis and I can't pronounce his last name, but he is like the financial guy for our school district, the greater, the school supervisory union. Um, and I'm posing this to the select board because I feel like this question shouldn't be a determination on just me. Um, it should be a a group decision. But um, just so the public is aware, um, most of their taxes, most of your property taxes, like ninety something percent actually go to the school. It really doesn't stay here. Very little stays here.
Yeah, eighty-five.
And um, after every property tax installment, we give the school, we create um, an allocated amount that's based on a report. Um, how much we're handing over to the school from those taxes and how much goes to the state for education purposes as well. What Louis Louis is asking us, because the third installment's coming up in May and they're going to be getting a check from those taxes. Um, we usually give them a big chunk of money that is allocated to them. He's wondering if it's at all possible if we could um, give them a little advance on that money. Um, and in my eyes, I don't see the harm in that. It's been done in the past. Um, but I felt like this was not an individual decision on me. It's more of a group decision. He's asking for um, five hundred thousand dollars in advance, which means it's it's his, it's the school's money. He just needs it a little earlier than a couple of weeks down the road. So my question to the board is, do you approve this?
My question to you is, do we have the funds available?
We do have the funds available. Yes, we do.
Well, I leave it for the decision. What's the board's pleasure?
Did did he give any explanation as to why he needs some money upfront?
Um, I think some some things were um, not anticipated that they had to um, give over to Rutland City for tuition purposes is my understanding.
Uh, Kerry?
Yes, Mary.
It does, did you ask our auditor whether he has any concerns about doing this?
Oh, I have not, but I mean, in in about 12 hours, I can ask him, sure.
That's a smart move.
Yeah, yeah.
I can certainly ask him.
Yeah, I think protect ourselves.
And how how nice she is. And that, and that when he was first elected to the board and she was running for chairman. He voted for her.
That's needs being muted, I don't believe.
Not that he wanted her to be chairwoman, but she, he voted for her to be nice, so therefore people should be nice in both, but the nice way. It was awful. Then I got up there and he said, oh, yep, and then he asked Larry and Larry said, yep.
I could, I can't even understand what she's saying.
But you couldn't give me an exact number of the postcards mailed or how, what list was used. So then.
I muted it.
Um, they.
Yeah, muted.
On and then, uh, let's see.
So that wasn't addressed to the board.
You ain't the only family.
Some private conversation.
The only one that got him.
Yeah.
Well, I sincerely apologize for that interruption, but um, I mean, I I don't uh, I I don't, I don't, I don't see any.
Well, let's just.
I don't, I don't see any harm in doing it, but I don't see any harm in asking, asking Andrew.
Yeah, I think we asked the auditor first.
So uh, would our decision be that we would approve this uh, provided that Andrew gives a go ahead? Uh, make it contingent so that we don't have to have another board meeting intervening?
Are they, are they doing this with other schools too?
I have no idea. I just got one email.
Those are the questions I'd want. I'm not comfortable with this.
Yeah, I kind of want to know if they're just coming to us because they think we got a pile of money we can hand them or if they're going to, you know, the the other towns in the.
And our money earns interest, so.
Yeah, I don't, seems odd.
My response to him, um, which I have emails, um, uh, that I I will, you know, I I don't feel comfortable making that decision on my own. I feel like I need to give it to the select board to make the decision. And my side note was the that money that we have is allocated for. I mean, that's why we have a budget. I mean, we have purposes for every dollar that we we have, so. I mean, I believe we have the money to give over to him because we have collected already about thirty percent of our taxes. So we could, we could justify it that way. It's it's going to be the school's money anyway. But I can certainly ask Andrew his opinion and then go from there.
Right. But as you understood it, the money that he was requesting was not for union purposes, it was for Rutland Town School purposes, or do you not know that?
Oh, yeah, I believe that that money that we give them each each tax installment is for Rutland Town School.
So that addresses your question, Kurt.
Okay.
He's not, he's not looking to us.
Yeah, because you mentioned Rutland City in there.
And that's what.
He's the treasurer for the whole union.
His email said Rutland City.
His email said.
Go ahead, Mike's got a.
Please.
Yes, the town pays Rutland City, for Rutland Town kids that are raised. High school.
Right.
Rutland City, and I'm not gonna, sometimes is not as diligent of um, saying how much their rate is per kid.
Okay.
Sometimes the district GRCSU, or excuse me, Rutland Town is held at more barrel sometimes because they have to pay that to the city.
Right.
Um, and they don't always anticipate, you know, they try to see how much the increases, but the city isn't in my opinion, very diligent in giving back to when tax files, so it makes perfect sense to what he's asking, and it's just for Rutland Town.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I don't know if you would go to Barstow or whatever school that sends.
Yeah, but that's.
It's strictly from Rutland Town.
Okay, that's that's different.
That's kind of the the, what happens with the city um, that I've seen over the years. It's it's nothing new that happens, as Kerry said.
Yeah.
The town is kind of their help with that. There's not much the town can do.
Well, I guess it it kind of falls, if you wanted to make an analogy, it kind of falls in the category of borrowing in anticipation of taxes that we used to have on the ballot all the time. Except they're not, they're not really borrowing. We're not charging them interest. They're just asking for an advance on the money that they're going to get May 10th.
Right.
So I would make the motion that um, we authorize Kerry to um, honor the request of the five hundred thousand with a provision that Andrew has no problem with it.
Motion's made.
They're just looking for this money in a couple of extra weeks.
Second.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded.
So they're only looking for the money about what, Kerry? About three weeks ahead of schedule because after May 10th, you would normally send them a check.
That's right.
Yep.
So so I think that we're okay, but.
Actually, two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing no discussion on the motion, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Kerry, you got some got your merchant orders on that one.
Okay.
What's your next short?
I'm so sorry. I really thought this was going to be.
Oh, it's productive information, at least.
Listen.
Okay, last thing, you can dismiss it until later, whatever. Um, but um, I've I've looked thoroughly at the bond application for through um, the Vermont Bond Agency. Um, and I've had some assistance in it. Um, and it's extremely um, intense, to put it lightly. Um, and I didn't know if we had wanted to have a conversation now or later, when we talk about the public safety building, if we are tonight, um, about possibly getting the bond for maybe next year. Because what the bond application is looking for is a lot of intricate specs. Um, and don't believe we're there yet.
No, just to let you know, uh, I spoke with Kerry today about this and I saw the application that she has for the bond. And the information that's being requested on this uh, has to be in by Friday, and there is no way in this creation that that information can possibly be available by Friday.
Not that information.
We're talking square footage of roofs and square footage of this and transportation and uh, roadways and all kinds of design things that are not going to be ready until we get an RFP completed at least, and probably until we get a bid and and a completion of the bid and an acceptance of the bid by the low bidder for the building. And then we'll have the information that she needs, so. I I'm just, I'm, I would suggest that you meet with the building committee and the clerk of the works.
Absolutely.
And anyone else that he deem is necessary in.
Before you, yeah.
And to go over this. You know, and have a meeting, set a meeting up.
Yes, so.
That building committee, uh, that building committee is you, Joe, and Sharon, so.
And then, and and JP as well.
Yeah, and JP as clerk of the works.
That's right. So um, I have been in contact with JP. He's been super helpful. Um, and as always, and um, I I feel like all of that, all of those pieces of information would need to come together for um, a complete packet to hand to or to submit.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to hand in a half. Done, and then you're gonna have to redo it anyway.
But to go along with that conversation, if we were, and I don't know where the project is right now, and that's a conversation to have with the committee, but I think we would be fine with all the other um, funds that we plan on using for this project. If we were to break ground and need money, there's other areas that we've asked the voters and they've approved.
Right.
That, you know, holding off on the bond may be an okay thing to do until a year from now.
Yeah. We may, we may have time to hear back on that bond we applied for too by then, so.
So, yeah.
So let's do, let's, let's follow that.
Okay.
Scenario.
Yep. I mean that.
And uh, I'll let the committee decide when you want to set that meeting up and uh, set it up with Bill and uh, we'll go forward with that. Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was my last thing.
Really?
Kerry.
Bye.
Thank you for your quick report.
You're so welcome.
Talking, you know, we're talking five hundred thousand here and a couple hundred, four million here, you know, it's
Little change.
Like it's small potatoes, really.
Jump change.
So uh.
Onward.
Right. I won't make any snide comments about the uh, fire department flyers, uh. Next report is from Chris Clark, our town fire chief. Chris, you on?
I'm here, Don. I'm here. Uh, it's the last two weeks. We had 12 calls. It's been a little busier than usual. Uh, we have been down to the Cortina Inn. I think four times, so more this month than we have in the last. I think, four times. So more this month than we have in the last six months. Um, nothing major going on down there, just, uh, alarms. The last one we had was actually called in by the hospital, um, for, they came, regional came and took a resident out of there. And the hospital actually called the fire department, not the hotel. Um, so I'm not sure if the, uh, alarm was working. I did call the state. They were going to go down there. I haven't heard back from them yet. Um, but just to keep you updated. And it's also been brought to my attention that they've been blocking the back parking lot with cars. And I've been told they're doing illegal activity. I don't know if that's true or not, but I've been told that if there is something going on out back, we're not going to be able to get out there because they have the parking lot blocked. So no fire trucks will be going out back. Um, so I don't know if, if, uh, Ed or Ted want to go down there and take a peek or you want me to call the state again or what you want me to do.
Well, I think it would be a fire marshal, it would be a fire marshal issue and, uh, su- uh, subject to a fire marshal inspection. If they're blocking a, if they're blocking a fire lane, I mean, that's, that's a violation of the state fire code. So.
Yeah. I, I haven't seen it with my own eyes yet, but that's what I was told, uh, just the other day. So I will call them back and ask them to take a look into that.
Chris.
And.
I wish, I wish you would.
I, I will. I'll do it tomorrow. Um, this Sunday is the Loyalty Day Parade. I signed up for putting two trucks in there. Um, just looking for your approval to send them down to the city to the parade.
Sure.
Would you, would you repeat that again? We had a little, uh, uh, Amtrak interference here to our, to our left.
I, I signed up to put two fire trucks in the Loyalty Day Parade this Sunday. Um, I was just looking for your permission to send them down there.
You talking what, engine one and three?
Uh, one and four, probably.
One and four?
Yeah, we don't have.
Yeah.
Board, uh, fire committee, have any objection to that?
No. Let's send them. Let's send them.
Send them. Fire committee chairman says send the trucks. So you got to go ahead.
All right. Thank you. That's all I got.
Um, could I ask the status of the new fire truck, please?
Uh, last meeting I reported that, uh, the transmission had a little malfunction. I haven't, they were supposed to have it fixed by the following Monday, but I have not heard from them.
Okay.
So we're supposed to schedule, um, our two members to go down to look at it, uh, either next week or the week after. But I will confirm that tomorrow when I, I'll give them a call.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any other board members have questions of our fire chief? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Our next report be Barbara Neus Pulling, our town planning commission chair.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, bear with me as I navigate, um, your new expectations of what you want to hear from, from the planning commission at our meetings. So, um, for those who haven't read the minutes from, um, Thursday, April twenty first of the planning commission, um, I would direct your attention to a proposed five lot subdivision, um, off Holly Lane. And also, um, one of our members, um, Dana Peterson has, has offered to be a hired consultant to help out with the Cortina. And that's also in the minutes.
Say that again, Barb. I didn't, I didn't under, quite understand what, what is being proposed.
That last.
Dana, Dana Peterson.
Yeah, uh, Dana is retiring, um, and, um, he's, um, concerned about, you know, some of the problems at the Cortina. And he is offering his services, uh, to, you know, for the town to hire him as a consultant. This is not public, uh, planning commission related, um, to explore, um, the situation there and, uh, potentially coordinate it better. Those are his words.
No, I think our town, our town police department's doing a good job, Barbara. I mean, I thank him for offering, but I don't think we need to hire anymore. Do you, Kurt?
Well, yeah, but there, there's, I mean, there, there may be ways that he can be helpful. But I think rather than be hired by the town, it would be appropriate for him to be hired by the NGO that is running the services.
For the Cortina.
The services for the Cortina because they're under state contract to do that. And I'm, I'm sure they would welcome, uh, somebody with his experience. And as a matter of fact, uh, I'm, I'm going to be meeting, uh, at, at some point in the near future with, uh, our police chief and, uh, Kareem Chapman, who is the, uh, the chairman, the CEO of the, uh, five oh one C three that's performing those services for the Cortina. So.
And it's getting paid well.
I can put him in touch or give him, uh, a reference and he could get in touch with Dana.
Barbara, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be greatly interested in talking to Dana about that also.
See.
Okay. Okay. And the, the name of the NGO again is?
It's Life Intervention Team, L I T.
It's Kareem Chapman is one in charge.
They call it the Lit Team and, uh, the CEO is Kareem, K A R I M Chapman, C H A P M A N.
Okay, yeah. I'll pass that along to him. Was there another question?
No, no, I just said, thank you.
Okay, yeah. He, he retires July first, so he's not available. Then he was thinking about taking some time off too after that, so, um, but I, I think he could make himself available shortly after July first.
I think if they take him up on his offer, he'll be far from retired.
That's what we wanted.
There's plenty of work. Watch out for what you asked for, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you, Barb. That's, uh, proactive. What else you got?
Um, nothing that requires a vote or anything.
Okay, good. Just keep, keep plodding along and let us know when you're getting close to a shovel in the ground or a request for funds or whatever else you need to get that project done.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Uh, and I might add my compliments on your negotiation of that dilemma. You got an A plus on that. Carrie, did you take note of that? That's it. Our, uh, thank you, Barb.
Okay.
Have a great evening. Our, our next report will be from Ed Dumas, our, our police chief and reporting remotely and under quarantine. Make sure your volume is up, Ed. I didn't hear what you said last time, so.
I don't control the volume of this, and if you control it, you're in. Can you hear me?
Well, just barely. It's muffled.
You're muffled, Ed.
I'd get right into the microphone, Ed.
Okay, first of, uh, it's, uh, we had ninety six, or excuse me, ninety four calls for, uh, for service. Uh, the first one, we had thirty two calls at the south end of the town. Uh, we had eleven deaths, all the south end of the town. Uh, we have, uh, the latest numbers from the Cortina are a hundred and fifty one rooms rented. It was my understanding there were only a hundred and fifty rooms. Also, we got a hundred, we got a total of two hundred and fifty four people there, including children and adults. So that's about all I have.
There's a, Eddie, Ed, does the state know, does the state know that out of a hundred and fifty rooms, they're being billed for a hundred and fifty one?
I just saw the numbers today. I don't know what they.
They don't care, Don. They don't care. They just don't want to be bothered with the problem. It's our problem.
Go ahead, Ed.
So that's all I have for that there. There was a, a motor vehicle accident involving a pedestrian earlier this week. I think it was on the twenty sixth. It doesn't look like those people were from the Cortina and, uh, but probably it was a domestic of some sort. Somebody stepped in the road by mistake. That's all I have at this point in time. Pretty short tonight.
Good. How are you feeling?
I feel fine. Just waiting for the tests, that's all.
Okay, well.
We miss you, Ed.
We miss you. And, uh, take care, get better, and let me know, let me know when that meeting is going to be scheduled so that I can confirm it.
I think Dana Peterson, we, he wanted to get involved. That'd be, uh, not a bad thing.
When's that meeting, Ed?
I'll let you, I'll let, uh, you know, Barb.
Okay.
It's kind of up near, uh, at this point in time, hopefully this week sometime.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Our next report will be from Mike Rowe, our town recreation director.
It's getting old, isn't it? It's getting old.
I'm not kidding.
But I, I. Good.
Uh, pretty good.
Well, uh, let's see. All of our seasons essentially kick off, uh, next week as far as our sports program. So mighty might start next week, um, and our T-ball program starts next week, which will be in conjunction with, um, our middle school baseball program. So that's always going to be fun. And then our majors and minors programs have already been practicing, but their games have been scheduled and they start next week as well. And the week after, Bill has graciously put the schedules up on the website. So if you want to check it out and, uh, go watch the teams play, they play all their games at, uh, Dewey Field for both the third and fourth grade and the fifth and sixth grade. So please go down and check that out. Um, our first round of mowing will be shortly. Day, two days, it will start and then it won't stop for a while. Um, so we're getting excited about that. Uh, water will be turned on, uh, soon, I hope, uh, just in touch with the plumber. Um, and when we feel, I, I think we're past the cold spell. Well, we passed it.
Hope so.
So once we get past that, we'll, uh, get our water turned on and we'll be up and running for, um, our season. The pool has, uh, cover is, is off and, uh, it's presently right now, um, you know, the water is evaporating from the sky, which is great. And then I will, uh, clean it out and fill it back up. And we'll be good to go. As always, our target date to turn it over is May, uh, is Memorial Day Friday, uh, is when I always press the button and the power gets, starts to crank. And then we hope to open that next weekend, um, if the weather is permitting. So that is literally right around the corner. I think we have one more meeting, maybe two before that happens. So moving along, uh, we did have a committee meeting today. Um, if Sharon wants to go into that, that would be awesome.
Yeah, because then if people have questions.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, um, has spoke to us about fencing at Dewey. Um, the old fencing's been there for years and it needs, um, you know, needs to be replaced. It's a thousand feet. It's, it would be coming out of the depreciation fund. We already have the money in there. So it wouldn't be anything that we had to go to looking for money. We had the offer of getting a rotor tiller, um, for five hundred dollars. Um, I checked with, you know, Kurt has a little more knowledge than I do on that. So he agreed that was a, a good, a good deal, was a great deal.
Very good, very good deal.
Yeah, so, um, I, I feel that we should in fact go with that. Um, their tractor seat on the tractor, the, the, um, zero turn is, um, failing. So we want to get a new tractor seat. Tractor seats are not what normally we would think would be cheap. It would be approximately.
About two thousand dollars.
About two thousand dollars.
An upgraded.
However, down the road, what we would do is take the, if down the road, we, we take that tractor and sell it, we would remove the new seat and put the old seat back on to sell it and be able to use that seat, am I right? That seat on the new tractor. So, um, again, between Mike and Kurt, I mean, I have sat on a tractor, but to put it mildly, my butt's not there. So they, they ride a little rougher than I do. So, um, and that's, you know, we have to take care of their backs and what have.
Are you saying that you're short, but he's wide?
We've had this discussion and she is absolutely correct. She is vertically challenged and I am vertically, you know, horizontal.
So where, where would we take this, Mike?
So that would come out of depreciation too, because I'm replacing the seat. Um, it's basically just an, an air cushioned seat. If you've been in the zero turn and it's, it's literally now going on, whatever, uh, close to ten years. Um, I'm a big guy and it's not a shock absorbing seat and we don't have smooth area and I feel bumps. And, um, it kind of kicks me like a ride in a Bronco every now and then. So replacing that seat, um, will go a long way with my posture.
So it's a safety issue.
It is a safety issue as well. It's a health thing too. So it does need to be replaced.
Okay, moving on. Um, we are going to be, we are looking to put the back nine for disc golf. Um, I'm going to have, I'm going to have Mike explain that.
Sure. So we, in the money that was, um, let me get it right. Uh.
It was allotted for pickleball.
It was allotted for, for our, uh, expansion, the eighty thousand that was allotted for the improvements at the park, which was the mountain biking trails, which was, uh, the pickleball court, um, and resurfacing, paying, we were able to save money, um, with that. And one of the other items that was on our list that we applied for the grant earlier was to add the back nine to pickleball. So I had that money there and that money that was.
The back nine to disco.
Oh, sorry. Back nine to disco. I apologize. Uh, and so I am asking permission to purchase the baskets for the golf now in anticipation of later in the, the summer and the fall and, and next spring, installing that, um, so that we have a full eighteen hole, uh, course within the park, which would make it more enjoyable for our disc and also potentially open it up if we wanted to hold some type.
Okay, so having said that, I'd like to.
Consolidate.
I'd like to consolidate everything. The fencing at Dewey, which is a thousand feet of fencing, the rotor tiller, um, the tractor seat and the back nine for disc golf. I'd like to propose that we pass all that. Give Mike the go ahead on that. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
I don't even know that it needs a motion, but that's fine. Yeah. Motion made and seconded that we approved the allo, that we approved the projects and the allocation of funds from the sources that were described.
Right.
Um, in order to get this done. It's all done within the budget.
When I went down through Mary.
She got the numbers. So the fencing there is about thirteen, a little over thirteen thousand dollars for that fencing. Okay, and the disc baskets are about thirty five hundred and then the seat is a little close to two thousand. Does that make sense?
Yep, so there's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, six, seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
Well, at the risk of incurring everybody's wrath, um, when, I, first of all, I think we do need a motion and that's appropriate when we do take money from the depreciation fund. Um, but the question about, um, uh, the fencing in particular, do we get quotes? Do, or do we go out to bid? It is over the five thousand dollars that are purchasing.
Yeah, he did. He did, Mary. He talked with several of them and, um, Skip seemed to give us the best price. Skip, uh, and he has done it. He has done numerous things up at, at Northwood with fencing. So, and he is a business in the town of Rutland, so.
Yeah, and I remember some of this conversation. There was a question about. Yeah, and I remember some of this conversation. There was a question about whether he should be made a preferred vendor and that would.
Probably not a bad thing.
Is he, is he on the list?
No, he's not.
And I don't know why he's not.
Yeah, we don't know. So I think you're right, Mary. So.
A motion might be appropriate.
Right, I understand that. Um.
I guess we gotta clear up this motion first.
Yeah, do we, can we clear up this mo- motion first and then go to him as a preferred vendor? Or do you want it the opposite?
I would rather you suspend this motion and take the first one up because that'll make it cleaner on the thirteen thousand.
All right, I make a motion that we um have Pratiko as a preferred vendor um for the town of Rutland.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to add uh Pratiko landscaping as a preferred vendor for the town of Rutland.
And I think Sharon, you had said that Skip had done a number of different projects for the town in the past. Okay, and we were satisfied with his work.
He's always done good work and anytime there was an issue, we came back and fixed it. So.
Thank you.
Stands behind his work, has done work, uh, his quality work. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous and uh Pratiko's landscaping will be added as a preferred vendor.
Okay, so my next is again for the total of the projects that I mentioned, the fencing at Dewey, the rotor tiller, the um the tractor seat and the back nine for disc golf, total of approximately seventeen thousand five hundred.
From depreciation.
From the depreciation.
Not all from depreciation.
It's not all depreciation.
Fence.
The fence.
And the seat.
And the seat.
Depreciation.
Our depreciation.
The um, the tiller I have the money for in my budget.
Okay.
And the disc golf would be from the money that was allotted.
Saved on those other projects.
Eighty thousand that was for the other projects.
Right.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So it's simply just the seat and the fence.
Yeah.
Since, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I made the motion. We need a second.
Second.
Are you clear on the motion?
I'm clear.
Any discussion on the motion?
I don't want to have to repeat it.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. So you gotta go and there you have.
Yeah, and then the last thing is that um, Mary and Kurt are doing the town line, town. Why, why? And um, they're looking at two different dates. They haven't come up with a definite yet. Um, they have some really good ideas and Mike Rowe is willing to, to jump in and help them out. Um, and I think it, you know, it really to me looks like something that'll will do some good for the town. So with that, um, we're looking to, to watch that grow and I, and I really think it's going to be tremendous. So.
What are the dates you're looking at?
We're looking at two dates right now, but those aren't firm. It's the August twentieth and August twenty-seventh.
I think Mary's, you and Kurt, Kurt, you should be talking about that.
Yeah.
Because you guys with that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're probably gonna try to push hard for the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
That's tough. Mike was talking about the, it'd be the last hurrah.
Last year, that would be nice.
So kind of lump all that together.
Yeah.
Be a grand old celebration.
You can flip hamburgers this year. Barry and I did a pretty darn good job. We didn't have any complaints, did we, Mary?
I'm predicting good weather for the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, you better. You don't talk about the weather when you need the weather. You just let it roll.
Okay, so that's all I have.
That is, we're good. So you guys let me know when you firm up the date and then we'll go from there. Okay.
Yep.
Let me know what I can do to help. Sorry, I was almost curious.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Your love.
Our next report will be from John Paul Fagin, our town health officer and public safety building clerk and second constable. Good evening, JP.
Evening, John. Uh, I've sent you, uh, we did a recent inspection down at the Holiday Inn. Assistant Health Officer Choffey went along and I forwarded his report to the board. So I just wanted you to be aware that we are continuing to monitor that situation. As far as the public safety building, you have in front of you tonight, the consideration of the people that'll be working the site. And uh, other than that, I don't have anything for the board.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to in looking at all of those, I would like to move that we add Enman Kessinger as the engineer to, as a preferred vendor before we go into the next motion.
The motion?
That's a.
Motion's made to add Enman Kesslering as a preferred vendor. They would join our other two preferred vendors.
Yeah.
And um, is that a second of the motion?
Yep.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Twice.
Any opposed?
I'll be opposed.
Motion carries uh, Mary, did you vote?
Yeah, she said yes.
Yes, I did. I voted in favor.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear. So the motion carries three with one abstention. And Enman Kesseling will be added to the, or no, not abstention, one negative vote. I'm sorry. I, my apologies. Um, Enman Kesseling will be added to the preferred vendor list along with Stan Tech and Otter Creek Engineering.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I would move that on the recommendation of our clerk of the works that we authorize Edmund Kessinger, Kessinger.
Kesserling.
To perform engineering services as um as added, as outlined in, in his, in their contract.
A um.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made to approve Enman Kesserling uh for engineering services as proposed in there or, or as um submitted in their proposal. Um, and submitted to us by the clerk of the works. A discussion on the motion?
Um, yes, please.
Yep, um, I think Kurt beat you to it, Mary, but go ahead, Kurt.
Okay, I, I was just curious why there's such a discrepancy in pricing on, on this. Now, I don't know if I, I don't know what, I don't know if Edmonds are forgetting something or if Otter Creek and Stan Tech were told something different than they were or, or where the discrepancy is, but we have two different, three different bids that are all across the board. I mean, we have Edmonds are four to five thousand. It looks like Otter Creek is twenty-two thousand five hundred. And then Stan Tech for the Civil and Site line, they have, they have landscape, architectural, lighting, all that other engineering, but for the Civil and Site, they're sixty thousand. So I was just, I was just curious what these engineers were.
Is that why you held off on the other?
That's why I held off on the other, just because I was not quite sure what everybody was told and why there's such a vast discrepancy in the pricing.
JP, do you, do you have any input on this?
Well, it's my understanding that they were sent the plans uh for the, for the building. Um, and it does appear to me as though they've taken approaches different than what we wanted, which was an estimate of the cost to tell us what we're looking at, which I think we get with the Blair Enman's firm. In other words, they seem, they seem to be baby stepping it and I don't know where these other uh firms, what approach they took, but it's seems like it's for a lot more services than we initially want or need.
I, I think that.
Whoa, whoa, wait, Joe. Joe, Joe, could you just?
Let Joe go. Oh, go ahead. All right, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, sorry. Um, I, I think what we're looking for here is um them, this, the engineering firm to go in and they're doing what is the preliminary um civil engineering plan and, and that's what we're looking for. And then there will be, then that, it's kind of like what we did with the architect. We, we allocated a certain amount of money for them to come up with a conceptual drawing of the building so that we could come up with an idea on a cost. And that's what we're authorizing here is for them to go in and give us uh basically what's going to need to be done and what we're going to need to do. And we need to have an engineer on site to do this. A lot of this work. Um, then, then they will know what actually has to be done, but this is like a preliminary um part, and I don't know if the other two companies understood that. Maybe they thought we were looking for the whole thing, but um it's six of one, half dozen of the other. I think they're all going to come in. Whatever, but um, I'm okay with Enman Kesslering doing the work. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Joe, well, I go, uh, Mary, you, you, you're up next here. You should have been.
Does that mean I get to go now?
Yeah.
Okay, so first question, did anyone sit down and do what we do for other bids and do a spreadsheet to compare? Um, second question is whether um the committee, the public safety building committee met to go over these. Um, third question is, I keep looking at uh the Enman Kesselring B and I'm not seeing that there's any, and maybe, and I might be missing it. So tell me what page their um quote for the total project is.
I believe it was in a cover letter. JP, if you want to address that.
Yeah, it is in the cover letter where they sent their proposal. I had forwarded that onto the board. I don't have a copy of it in front of me where I'm sitting right now. But it's in the cover letter where they estimate, and I want to say the cost was five or six thousand dollars for the preliminary review of the site to make sure that it's an appropriate site. The building will fit on it, those kinds of issues.
Okay, the bill didn't include the cover letter in the packet, I don't think.
It's an email, it's an email. It, it is in there. It's, it's, it's behind.
Okay.
Bid, it's an email chain from JP and it's, it is in there.
Yeah, it's, it's in an email.
Okay. Is that where they said we recommend a carrying budget of forty to uh four thousand to five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be the only place I see. So.
I think that they also recommended a, uh, they also recommended retainage of, of fifteen percent.
Yeah, so should we ask Otter Creek and Stan Tech for a price for prelims? Like they're that way, everybody's on the same page.
I think they were asked, but they just misinterpreted the request. That's what I, that's what I understand JP to say.
Should we double check with them and, and maybe?
I think we need to move on.
Suggest that, you know, we don't need all these services right now and see maybe if they come back with something different. I just.
That wouldn't be my, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be my desire, but that's a good, you know, that's your suggestion. We're in discussion. We do have a motion on the floor, so.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's a I mean. I didn't hear that.
Go ahead, Joe.
Um, I just said, I think that, you know, we've, we've, we've got a pretty good proposal. We, we put this out. We've, we've spent a couple of weeks on it. I don't think that we're going to get hurt here. We've just added them to our preferred vendor list. So um, I think we're okay. And, and you know, we kind of try, I don't, it's spreading the word around between different firms that we do business with is good or bad, but that seems to be what we're doing. And so I don't have a problem with Enman Kesseling's proposal and, and I think we should just move forward with it and get this thing under motion for the next step. So we can try to, you know, stay, we're, we're not spending a huge amount of money, not hundreds of thousands. So I, I would think we should just move forward and um vote on it and see where it goes.
So I still have the question, are we voting on the number? What number are we voting on for Enman Kesselring? Is it four to five thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That should be included in the motion.
Was that a firm? Are you reading?
It's an estimate. It, I, I think it's an estimate, Don, because some of this stuff, you know, when they get out there on the site, there may be more stuff that needs to be done to come up with firm plans and firm stuff, but in, in, I, I would say that in their experience, this is usually an adequate amount to um do a project. It said they, they had a contingency amount in there of like fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred, uh, fifteen percent or something, just in case. Um, and that's for the, the unknown. So I, I don't think we're going to get hurt too bad. I, I don't think, you know, they, they know, they do this for a living, so they're familiar with the site and this, this is what the preliminary stuff probably normally runs.
I just, I don't, I don't like not holding them to a firm number, which I mean.
And I don't, I don't think, I don't think we can.
You, yeah, Joey, they, they do this stuff all the time on firm, firm numbers. That's their business. I mean, they, they bid work all the time, you know? So I, it's, it's hard for me to say four to five thousand dollars. And you know, if it comes in at eight, well, we're not holding them to anything, you know? I get sometimes it takes more work, but if they have a set price not to exceed, then they have to do the work for that price. I mean, it's, it's bid work, you know?
He. JP, do you have anything to add to that, to the discussion on price?
I, I don't.
Okay. Well, you know, it's uh, it's up to the board what you want to do.
All right, so I would, I would suggest a friendly amendment to the motion that um we approve Enman Kesselring at a cap of five thousand dollars as reflected in their email.
Fair enough.
So the motion has been amended to reflect a cap of five thousand. Is there a second to the amendment?
Good. I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to amend the motion to put a cap of five thousand on the Enman Kesseling bid.
It has to go higher. They just come back at us. If it has to go higher, they can.
All those and any discussion on that motion?
I think Sharon's right. They have to go higher. They have to come back in and talk to us.
That's right.
Right, but, but does that include it with the motion that I made?
Well, let me, let me, let me control the issue here. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment has been added. Now we're, now we're voting on the main motion. Uh, which is, which is to, uh, which is to award Enman Kesseling the bid on the engineering services with a cap of five thousand dollars. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion?
Yep.
And uh, I would like, yeah, I would like to ask JP, going forward, JP, are we going to use the usual and customary practice of letting the architect make the decisions on those other soft costs that may be necessary?
Yes, as well as the other engineering aspects of the project that are required.
Okay, so those, those will not be coming before us. Those will be in the hands of the architect.
That's correct.
Through them. Is there any other discussion on the motion, the main motion? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor uh of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously and, and Kesseling will get on with the work. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, JP, uh, just a question on that, on that issue of the blockage of the back of the building. Um, would that be appropriate for Frankie to go down?
Yes, um, either Frankie or I will go down and check that out because it, it may very well come under the purview of the health officer if it can be seen as a public threat, which I think failure to be able to get there with fire protection services threatens the people in the facility. failure to be able to get there with fire protection services threatens the people in the facility. So I think it would fall within our jurisdiction as well.
And just so you know JP, the word on the street from my street people is that's going business out back there. And I didn't say illegal.
This is Chief Dumas. Can I have a chance to talk here?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, they did put a rope fence across there. It's very low key to keep the people out back from driving back there and doing drug deals and all those things like to do. It's very simple to tear down and get rid of. There's, I've been on there several times. There's been no vehicles blocking at all. They actually towed a car the other day that was back there because they know the rules are they can't have vehicles back there. And they towed a vehicle and let us know that it happened. So I don't think there's an issue with having ropes across there. It's a very simple barricade that can be knocked over. I could drive over it with my crews if I had to.
Yeah. Yeah, we we may be having that conversation, Ed, with the NGO when we, when we meet.
So the NGO asked me about that and I said, as long as a fire truck could get back there, I was not opposed to having some sort of gate or rope or whatever they have back. It felt like a cones with sticks in it and a little rope went across. That's it.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of like a hope and a prayer, you know, but not really effective in doing what it was intended to do, so.
Well, it is because they towed the car that was packed. They know the rules. They went back there. They call the record service. They towed the vehicle out of there because they're parked back there. That will enforce the rule they have.
That's good.
At least they're trying.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it JP? And anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill Sweet, our Town Administrative Assistant.
Good evening.
Hey, Bill.
Doing well. All right, I just have a couple of things. One, do you want the work authorization agreement for Edmund Kesselring to sign?
Yes.
Okay.
My arms are shy.
Try to get it to you.
So you see there was a pink envelope?
Well, there became one just a couple of seconds ago, so didn't need one before. So there's, there's that. The, the only thing in the packet for you to talk about is the information from Otter Creek Engineering on their proposal for engineering services for the post road sidewalk. So only a couple of things that I have, we have I, I heard from the organization that's running the testing test distribution downstairs. It says it's going very well. Their, their usage is going up on a regular basis and more and more people are coming to, to get them. And they're probably going to ask for an extension past the end of May to be able to continue to use that. So that probably will come either the next meeting or the meeting after to, to request that. So we're just keeping in the back of our minds how long we want to let, let them use it for. The only thing we have really downstairs is the election. So that's the only thing we don't want to run up against, but other than that, they're going to, they're going to come and ask for an extension on the timeframe using the downstairs. And we had sent, thank you, we had, we talked about a month or so ago about the sewer allocations, the users exceeding them. We have three that still have not responded. They've been sent two letters, like two of them are businesses and one of them is residential. I talked with the store managers of both the businesses yesterday. And one was aware of it, one was not aware of it. So they both promised to get on it. The one that was aware of it says she's been bugging her upper management about it. So they're going to, they're going to get on it. So hopefully we'll get something from them in the next thirty days. And the only other thing we have to, under new business, there's no paperwork for it. But the, we, we amended the vehicle and traffic ordinance that did take effect between the last meeting and this one. So just need to take a vote to certify the amended ordinance, just so we can, that way we can pass it along. We have to have a certified copy provided to the Traffic Court Division on the first business day of every month. So that way any traffic tickets that are sent in are, are covered under that. If we don't send it in, it's my understanding that they just are automatically dismissed. So since we amended it, we have to, board just has to say they certify the new copy and we'll be good to go. That's all I got.
I would so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you. That's pretty easy. There's no, nothing to sign for that. It's just
Okay.
The vote and I just put it, put it in on and we're good to go. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, about those engineering, the engineering services that we need to, we need to sign something for that when we get to it under new business?
For the post road sidewalk?
Yeah.
You, you have that here. There, there was a page. Yeah, there is, there's an authorization to proceed. So on the second page there, so if you decide to go with that, it's on your copy of the, you can sign the second page there. You're good to go.
Sign yours or?
You can, you can sign your, you can sign mine. It's fine. It's, it's all, they're all.
When we get to it.
Yep. So yeah, when you're ready for that, just, and you can just.
Let's just do it now, Don.
What's that?
Do it now.
Well, you're.
I make a motion. I make a motion, Don. Can I? Who made the motion?
You did, Joe. You beat your doing.
Okay, well, the motion would be that we authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the town to accept Otter Creek Engineering's proposal for the work to be done on the post road sidewalk. I want to see this sidewalk built in my lifetime.
And the motion was seconded as well.
So that is at a cost of five thousand dollars.
Yes, it is. See, I'm trying to find it here.
Second page.
Yeah.
Lump sum fee of five thousand dollars.
We propose completely above services for lump sum fee of five thousand dollars. Yes.
So sign away.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? I'll sign it.
Sign it up.
Maybe they'll start digging next week. No, we gotta do the water first.
There, there are some municipalities out there that would put the sidewalk in and then maybe put the water line in afterwards.
Yeah, we're, yeah. We all know that.
Yep.
There you go.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Okay, so I'll take care of those. Yes?
Got it, Bill?
That's it for me.
Beautiful. Short and sweet.
Tried.
Okay, committee meeting updates next, and we have taken care of the Recreation Committee and we have also taken care of the Townwide Celebration Committee. I think, but we have an Energy Committee report, Mary?
Yes, we have no action to come before the board. I did meet with representatives from the Planning Commission who are working on an energy survey. They're going back to make some revisions after our discussions. I will point out that part of the town's energy plan contained in our town plan does call for the town to do exactly what we're doing, which is adding sidewalks and connecting sidewalks. So JP Sidewalk, the Adele Stanley Connector Sidewalk, and now the post road sidewalk are all moving us ahead under our town energy plan to, I, I just wanted us to make that connection that these are not frivolous things we're carrying forward with planning efforts. And that completes my Energy Committee report. We did want to ask the full board on the Townwide Celebration Committee about the proposed dates in August. They were mentioned, but we didn't bring it. That was the one thing we wanted to ask the full board if they are okay with either August twentieth or August twenty-seventh. And now it sounds like the preferred date is August twenty-seventh.
Does anyone have anything to add to that? The twenty-seventh sound like a good date?
Yeah, these years.
I have a question for Mary.
Joe.
What's that?
Um, Mary, if we do it in August like you're proposing, which I think is a good idea, end of summer, you know, shebang would be fun. Will that allow the committee and us enough time to put this together?
I think so. Bill has already connected with the ice cream truck and they're available. So that's a big draw. And he, we, I believe we confirmed the DJ this evening as we were talking with the rec committee. So that's another big draw. Everything else. Mike O was very helpful. Everything else I think we can pull together in time. Certainly better to do it in August than try to pull it together for late June or early July.
Yeah, I agree completely.
Yeah, so, so I think that as a board, we should, you know, commit to the twenty-seventh and allow the committee to do their thing to, to organize and, and see if we can get all the, get what they want to do in order to say in the next thirty days to come back to us and say, okay, we can make this go. And if, if it looks like it's not going to work, then we'll have to wait another year. And that'll give us plenty of time to get it out there. You know, if we know by the first June that we're going to do it, that'll give us enough time to get the advertising, get the word out so people in town can plant.
Okay, good. Well. Like the way I see the list, Mary, the, the DJ, it seems like you're, you're kind of like there with the DJ. The bounce houses, I don't know where they're coming from, but that would be one thing. And the rollover simulator, if we could get it. The pool use, that's on us and that's doable. The ice cream, we've got a commitment. On grill food. I have a beautiful thirty-six inch black stone that I'd be more than willing to transport up there. Which that can cook a lot of food
Yep.
for, for a lot of people. I mean.
In the past, we've gotten, the Killington Fire Department has a big grill that's mounted on a trailer that we've gotten also.
Yeah.
That can cook a lot of stuff, so.
Because I remember when Mary and I were flipping hamburgers. We, we were moving pretty fast and I think we had two grills, didn't we, Mary?
This thing can cook forty, forty or fifty hamburgers on a clip and hot dogs or whatever. It's, it's huge. It's a beautiful machine. So anyways, so.
Let's let the committee do their thing and, and report back to us. They had two meetings from there, the end of May.
Just tell us what you need. Yeah, it'll be there.
So we can authorize that date of the twenty-seventh for the committee?
Yes, no, you, the recommendation of the committee is accepted anyway. So. Great.
So I make a motion that we accept the twenty-seventh of August as the date for the townwide celebration.
Motion that our townwide celebration be planned for the twenty-seventh of August.
I'll second that.
And seconded. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You again. Beautiful. And that pretty much completes all of the new business. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Does anyone have any old business they would like to bring up in front of the board? Hearing none, a motion would be appropriate.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Kurt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned fifteen minutes before scheduled.